The fiscal presentation will be provided by Stephen Carter.
Okay. Before we get too far into it, Stephen Carter, Assistant CAO, I wanted to bring up that Leisha Phillips is in the room today, and she is taking over my old position as the main finance person for the county, going to do the budgets and things. I will still oversee her and do a lot of that, but she'll be taking on a lot of those duties. So, the fiscal presentation. I'll wait for that. So, the fiscal presentation day is all related to general fund. That doesn't mean that general fund is the only department or fund that matters. It's just self-funded departments have a very different funding source, both state and federal grants and allocations mostly. The general fund is where there is what? That's not the way the slides are. Sorry about that. So, we'll be going over the main points of emphasis in the general fund where there's discretionary revenue or room for items for your board. The first up is ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, and our section is the state and local fiscal recovery funds. We did have the committee, and the recommendations came to the board. So, what I have up on the slide today is the amounts that were allocated for projects, and then the amount that hasn't been claimed so far. So, if you can see, there's not very many that have been claimed so far, but it has all been allocated to departments. There are a few within this list that are already known where other funding sources were available. For example, the first one, Special Districts Bridge. I didn't put in specifically what bridge it was, but the $380,000 was paid through a separate grant, so that is now going to be available to reallocate within the $10 million standard allowance. And what that means is the $10 million is the county can claim $10 million, up to $10 million for financial difficulties from COVID. It just has to be within our governmental activities, within certain guidelines of the final rule. So, if you can see, the Army remodel has $3 million. And the big key here is everything needs to be allocated, as well as mainly allocated in the budget through before the end of 2024, December 31st, and then we would have until December 31st of 2026 to actually spend the money. But it has to be fully allocated by then. Prefer to spend most of it by the end of 2024. Dump site haulers, tertiary plant, treatment plant, those are special districts. We have $300,000 set aside for Broadbent Consultant, which we have brought onboard CBG and should be claiming soon. So, we claim on a quarterly basis. So, this is just information that we've claimed through December 31st of last year. We just had a claim due today, and that actually was not part of this information. I don't believe there should be any questions on this because we've gone over the $10 million before. There's $2 million set aside for Housing/Economic Development Department, which is now going to be positions within the administration office. $500,000 for the general plan update. And there is $200,000 set aside for the mobile vehicle library, mobile library vehicle. And most of that is being paid by a separate grant, but there is some still need. I believe he wanted about $50,000 of this to stay available for any overages. But there should be about 150 remaining to recycle into other ARPA projects. So, the next slide is the amount that is above our $10 million standard allowance. This is about, supposed to be about almost $2,506,000 if we were going with the minimum. And that all has to follow the final rule directly. So, this would be like what we've already... Sorry, I'm having difficulty getting my thoughts together. So, we just signed an agreement with NCO for building homes, building lives, $800,000. The first $200,000 will go out within the next few weeks, and then it will show as claimed instead of zero. So, things are getting done. It's just not all the way to the claiming point yet. The other items, Public Health Department has a little over $561,000 available to them, and I've talked to Jonathan Portney, and we're going to find a way to have that money transferred to him for the correct claiming purposes. And then Kelseyville Seniors, Inc., there's $700 that's set aside for purchase/remodel/rebuild, which will come back at a later date for a closed session within a few weeks. And then there's also $300,000 for all senior centers. And the committee approved for assessments. And it became clear that the board really wanted more like a grant program where it would be $50,000 for each senior center for any kind of capital improvements, whether it be a roof, vehicle, that type of activity, or purchase. And that will, that form is actually ready to be presented to the board, and it'll be within the next few weeks as well for approval or not. And then two different First Five software and then home visiting. We have not claimed anything yet. I will be in contact with First Five to see where that stands. And then we have already paid out the $100,000 for Lake Links, for the rides, for medical appointments, et cetera, for outside of the county. And that would take care of the entire ARPA funds once it is spent. I figured I would take questions in between since these are large items. If you have any on the ARPA.
Anybody have questions on the ARPA?
No.
Just that. Oh, Bruno, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, no, I can appreciate the fact that it's slow to come in to show us the claims. What's your plan on bringing it back to the committee to kind of review where we are? I think that, I believe the board agrees on this, that we just don't want to give any money back. We want to make sure that when that deadline comes through that we have spent all of the ARPA funds rather than having to give some money back. Kind of checking in, what's your kind of check-in timeline?
Yep, that was going to be my question, too.
I'm getting a note, one second. Prior to the budget process, so before June, the June 14th and 15th, I believe, was where the recommended budget would be. So, that would actually be a very good time to... We should probably do it near the end of March, early April, because that's when the departments turn in their budget to our office to start evaluating. So, we would need to know around that time. And that gives us also more time to figure out, you know, if the tertiary plan will happen or if all $2 million is needed for the housing economic development. We would have a lot more information at that point in time, and it'd be ready for '23, '24's budget.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, the next item up would be cannabis cultivation and business taxes. So, this first slide is just historical information, and that's related to different fiscal years and how much the tax revenue was, as well as the expenditures. So, fiscal year 1718, when it first started, we received a little over $267,000, but we had no concept of how much funding would come in. So, there was zero expenditures, and I don't believe anything was even allocated at that point. And when you move through the years, you don't really get into major revenues until fiscal year 2020, 2021, when we received a little over 8.5 million. But in that same year, we expended $300,000. So, that's still a lot of revenue that did not get spent in that year. Doesn't mean it wasn't allocated for a project. Not all allocations are spent, and they could be carried over year to year. So, but if you go to the end of fiscal year 21, '22, the total received from 1718 to 21, '22 was a little over $16,276,000, and the total expenditures were $1,749,000, which leaves a fund balance available or carryover of a little over $14.5 million to '22, '23. That's where the next slide comes in. And that really does sound like there's an awful lot out there to reallocate to. So, if you look at the fiscal year '22, '23 budget, the sheriff for staff, automated license plate readers, vehicle equipment, $618,000. Some, a few of these items are going to be in mid-year budget, like the vehicle equipment. So, that would be part of their normal policy ask out of cannabis. Library staff is on here for $245,000. And not only budgeted, I have the future year amount in the far column. So, if you notice with the sheriff, the top line with the staff, there's only $443,000 for future years. That's because it doesn't include the vehicle equipment. That's a one-time charge. But the other ones are ongoing expenses, which would need to be budgeted every year and thought about the prior year to make sure that if no taxes are received, et cetera, that we have the funding for one more year to possibly close down the program or whatever is going on, figure out how to have general fund cover it, et cetera. So, then that leads into the library staff, where it's $245,000 budgeted this year, but $281,000 next year. And that's because the librarian, the county librarian, Christopher Veach, wanted to hire more of the positions that we allowed. So, when we initially, the committee and the board approved his request, it was originally for more positions than he actually hired. And basically, we didn't want it allocated unless he was going to use it. So, he has decided to increase his allocation and start hiring more positions to the level that he requested or slightly below that he requested. And then looser in dredging, there's $100,000 budgeted there. And we heard earlier today that they finalized CEQA, and it's moving forward. So, that will be spent here, hopefully, within the next year or two. I'll give it a wide range of time. But if that's not spent this year, then that one would be one of those future year expenses as well. And then water resources. I combined about three different requests that were approved by your board for water resources for $980,000 in this fiscal year. $800,000 is for the Army Corps of Engineers match. And then $100,000 was for the lake, sorry, $75,000 was for the lake cleanup for boats, anything like that. And $75,000, $100,000, sorry, too many numbers in my head. $100,000 was part of that grant match over five years, where it's 500 over the entire time, but we add $100,000 each year, no matter if they spent $50,000 this year. That means 150 is available next year. So, that's why future years, you see $500,000. It's the $400,000 for that grant and $100,000 for the lake, which is a very good reason. And then here's some one-time expenses for public services, Parks Master Plan and the feasibility study, which is $206,000. And no future costs, so that just means it's not going to be ongoing, not that it's all going to be spent this year. So, it might have to carry over depending on if the items, the projects are completed. And then building deferred maintenance, that's where the committee and the board approved $1 million for deferred maintenance on our buildings. And we've had reports where it was 50, 100 million. It was astonishing. This year, we have $925,000 budgeted and $75,000. I don't recall if it was budgeted or not, which is why I put it in future years to make up the entire million. And then the roadmap task force through the committee and the board was also approved for $1 million. $661,000, a little over $661,000 is budgeted this year with $338 remaining for future years or if at mid-year, we, the board decided to increase the amount that's budgeted. And then the BOW West discretionary, there's budgeted $1,052,617, which might sound high. You guys are, the board is spending their discretionary revenue, but it's quite a bit. So, it just looks like a large number, but everybody is spending theirs. And next year would be $500,000 if we decide to, we, sorry, the board decides to increase, continue the $100,000 every fiscal year. Oh, okay. North Shore Fire, there remains $126,000, a little over that amount towards their equipment. And child support, this is related to the raises where they have the same state allocation, even though we provided, the board provided raises to all employees. I keep saying "we," sorry. Provided raises to all employees. They had no way to pay for those raises, and the state won't, is, they're currently looking at the allocation, but in the meantime, they would have had to cut staff or cannabis, which was agreed by your board to cover the difference. And this is only, I believe, 30%. The federal government will pick up 70, 75%. So, this keeps them with the same staffing level until their allocations catch up. And that's why there's an ongoing expense. And the reason why it goes down in future years is, and it's only next year that it goes down, and that's because Gail is retiring. So, the next department head likely won't have the same rate. But then the year after, you know, so two years from now, it'll jump back up into a higher amount. And then the hiring retention incentives. A lot of this is actually in mid-year. So, if you recall, during the regular budget, there was only $50,000 set aside for hiring incentives. But it was approved by the board to give certain retention incentives for the sheriff's office. And it has already gone, that has already been paid out. And $535,000 is how much it's going to cost for both the incentives and the hiring, the retention incentives and the remaining hiring incentives to possibly come this fiscal year. And future years, I drop it to, I dropped it to $150,000 because it shouldn't be such a large blast unless something changes. The Treasurer Tax Collector has $20,000 set aside every year, and what that's for is the increased load strictly from cannabis activities, which that doesn't cover it, but it helps. And then the item, policy items not listed above. What that means is items that would fit into the policy that just haven't been budgeted yet. So, we did have budgeted in Fund 064 Budget Unit 1072 Cannabis, $200,000 for new items that meet the policy, and those just haven't been identified yet. And so, that brings me down to the reserve. And the reason why the reserve is set at $6,961,111, such an odd number. What that is, is all the future years amounts plus the potential drawdown for next year's payroll increases from our MOUs, which was approved to be paid from here. So, what that does is covers everything for next year, even if we don't receive any cannabis tax revenues next year if something, if anything should happen. So, that gives us an entire year to wind things down and take care of it instead of having to do it immediate or within a month or two. And with all that said, the total allocation is $13,332,205, which if you look, remember the previous slide, the balance forward was a little over $14 million. So, the balance that is not allocated or accounted for is almost $1.2 million. And the main reason for that is because this fiscal year 22, '23, we had budgeted originally a little over $5 million to cover our cannabis payroll. And it turned out that we actually had enough of our own revenues outside of cannabis to take care of it. So, it relinked, we, it went back into the cannabis pot to be allocated out. And so, the balance would be that amount, $1.2, plus any revenue received in fiscal year 22, '23. And Patrick, the Treasurer Tax Collector, would have more information on that since that's really not administration. But what I've been told is that through September, we've received just over $750,000. And that's, the reason for that is we had a grant from the state, and that's the amount through the equity grant that we could transfer and pay for cultivators' taxes. So, that came in ahead, so that's both tranches for them. Now, the first, the first payment wasn't due until the end of January. So, basically, today is the last day. Yesterday, sorry, the 30th, not the 31st, okay? And from my talk with the Treasurer Tax Collector, because that's really his side, yesterday, there's about $200,000 in the wings to come in before the end. So, before the, once they process all the checks. So, if you cut the $750,000 in half, because that's really the first half payments, 350, 325, 375, plus the $100, 200, we're looking at, should be a minimum of about $1.25 million. And that's much lower than our actual budget, which we projected 3.5. The key difference, though, is Patrick told me that they billed out 3.9 million. So, there's our ceiling. So, if everything that was billed out is paid, it would be 3.9 million. But once that's billed, it's not necessarily taken into consideration the canopy area where they're saying they're only going to grow about 50% or if they're going to non-opt that year. Because of the timing of when all this gets sent out, we don't, and when we budget, it's not known at that time. So, realistically, we're probably going to see around $2 million-ish is what our estimate is right now. I'm sure there's plenty of conversation with cannabis.
Okay. Questions from the board? Supervisor Green?
Uh, where to begin? Well, $2 million is better than no million, I guess, would be the starting point.
Agreed.
Looking back at the historical information, 2020, '21 and 21, '22, eight and 8.5, 6.4. That's, that, those figures are much more in line with what, when Measure C, this is primarily cultivation tax, I assume, with a little bit of business tax thrown in. But when we first started talking about this years ago, it's like if we're going to have this industry at all, and then we're going to tax this industry, what's it going to take to create a sustainable amount of tax revenues? And what will this new-fangled Measure C deliver us? And I'm still trying to track down who came up with the estimate, but the estimate at the time was approximately $8 million a year would come from this regulated industry. And I know it takes some time to grow that industry, and you see that in the revenues. But to go from eight to six, down to a potential two, represents one term to me, and one of it is opportunity cost. Our good friends up in Humboldt, much more aggressive, much different permitting structure, have banked away 40-plus million dollars in recent years, such that they can literally afford to give their growers a total flat-line tax rate for future years and still be able to budget for the county's needs. Our assorted choices over the years have led us to a cumbersome, expensive discretionary permit process that has netted us, what, 100-plus permits? We have 100-plus still in the pipeline, and we have no opportunity for new projects to come forward that don't have a water board permit that they've been milking for the last three years. And the question has come up time and time again. How do we reach sustainability? How can we budget for this year to year? You know, are the growers going to come back again and ask for another tax cut? They'd be well within their rights to do so, given their impacts on their industry. We still have to get the task force to talk about our permit process. Are we going to continue milking discretionary permits or go more ministerial so we can actually get these projects online? So, the good news is, I think the original estimate that was given to our voters and this board at the time, 2016, is accurate. I think if we scale this industry appropriately, that means more permits, not less, and get the tax burden down to something that's more affordable, I think we can end up floating around that $5 to $8 million a year. But the projections given here, and knowing what we know of the process and CDD and our ability as a task force to change that overnight is not going to happen. We're nowhere close to sustainability. So, it's very concerning, such that I've literally been told, "Don't be looking at these as sustainable revenues. These are one-time revenues, you know, so bank them because they're not coming back." And that's hugely concerning to me. And I realize that is not fall on the shoulders of the Treasurer Tax Collector to correct. And there's nothing we can do about it today. But the numbers, to me, are low enough and shocking enough that they signal to me a need for urgent substantial change in how we permit our cannabis industry. And I don't have any questions. Those are just comments. I'm just looking at the numbers. They don't look good. And we need to figure out how to sustain this industry, support this industry very selfishly for the county so that we get a sustainable source of tax revenues, but more importantly, for the people that have invested in this county and want to continue to serve this county in a helpful way by putting good projects before us and giving a little share of the wealth that they generate to the county. That's all I got. Thank you.
If it would please the board, I do have a little bit of additional information to share on this.
Go ahead.
So, I think an important point to remember, too, here is, I am in agreement with Stephen's figures, and I did have extensive discussion with him about it. What's tough about this point in time is that because we have consistently bumped back due dates, it's hard for us to give real estimates. The way our system's structured, as Mr. Carter pointed out, we allow people to make changes to their cultivation area or their canopy area before the budget process is complete. So, we're having to come up with estimates early. But it also impacts the billing because a lot of times we're getting information late from, well, CDD, CDD is not able to complete all of their inspections until later in the season sometimes. So, we send out billing. And what has consistently happened each year is that after that billing goes out, we have found out that the structure of the partnership has changed. For instance, we're sending the mail to an accountant. That accountant is no longer handling the business for this entity, and we start getting mail returns. We're going through that right now. We have over two dozen cannabis tax bills that have come back. That has been a regular experience. Then we're forced to follow up. We find out that, you know, the managing partner is different. It's a different consultant, a different accountant. And then we have to reach out, get the bill to the right person. They pay. Often, you know, there's a penalty involved at that point, so it's difficult for the business as well. But that does make it hard right now, when the due date was yesterday at 5:00 p.m. for us to give a realistic prediction of where we're going to be. So, I just wanted to qualify everything with that. Usually, because we had those earlier due dates in the year, by the time we had these discussions, we'd already worked through a lot of that return mail. We had phone calls from multiple parties yesterday that said they were trying to make it into pay, but they didn't get here in time. Presumably, they will pay late. So, that's something we've gone through regularly with this industry in my time here. And I would expect it to continue until we get a more solidified program in place. I mean, each year, we've changed core functions of the program, whether it's the due date or the tax rate or the cultivation or canopy area, the area of measure that's used to assess the tax. So, I hope at some point, there's more stability to the program in general. But I think as long as it's in flux, that does make it especially difficult to forecast the revenue. So, I just wanted to get those statements out there to qualify some of those figures.
Yeah, and additionally, the second installment is due in May. And so, if anyone missed yesterday's deadline, they have a penalty.
They have a penalty. And that's one of the features of our ordinance that makes us different than some other counties. Our penalty is completely upfront. So, once someone is late, they incur that 25% penalty. It's not, it's not, let's say, a 10%, where then it's a 1.5% penalty each month thereafter. You incur that whole penalty upfront. So, we've also encountered this when people are late, when they need extra time. If they need an extra week, if they need an extra month, there's not an incentive to get If they need an extra week, if they need an extra month, there's not an incentive to get it in right away. So we've often had people get that rest of the money and buy the second payment before other action occurs. So that's just another consideration on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
The, the next slide goes into secured property and sales tax. These are two of our main, it's technically three because of Bradley Burns and Prop 172, but our main discretionary revenues for the general fund. And they are actually coming in extremely well this year, both the property tax and the sales tax. If you look at the secured property tax only, um, all the others are doing fine as well, but it was easy to explain the secured property tax because that's where most of it is. If you look at 1920, we had an actual final revenue of a little over 16.5 million. 2021, a little over 17.5 and 2122, a little over 18.6 million. So it's, it's steadily going up by two plus percent. And if you take the ratio of actual received through January and then extrapolated out, the estimated for the end of this fiscal year would be 19,353,000. And we budgeted 18,446. And part of the reason why I'm showing that is that nine, about 907,000 difference is going to show up in mid-year as being a recognized revenue so that, um, the items like the board salary changes, as well as the requests from departments within general fund, that's how it's being paid for, is the extra revenue that we did not previously budget. So it's not carryover or FBA, it's actual revenue that's coming in. And then Bradley Burns and Prop 172 sales tax, fiscal year 1920, um, the total was a little over 6.5 million. And then during the pandemic, when we thought sales tax would go down, it actually exploded up. That's a bad word, but it went up immensely, we'll put it that way. 2021 went to a little over 7.8 million and in 2122, it jumped to a little over 9 million. Now, looking at the data through December actuals and then extrapolating it out compared to the prior three to five years, we're estimating that a little over 8.6 million will come in between the two different sales taxes. And we budgeted 8.4, so realistically, out of those large crystal balls, that's not too bad. But there is about 260,000 that we could at mid-year recognize. And we are going to recognize about 75,000.
I don't remember, I think it was 68, then she dropped it by 15, so 15 maybe, I don't know for sure.
Okay, so about 50,000 is already spoken for, but there is an additional 220 that is not spoken for at this point.
Any questions?
All right, moving on to the potential impacts to future budgets. So we already have MOUs in place through, um, June of 2024, or might be July of 2024. 2% increase for all positions, July 1 of '23 and 3% increase July of 2024. That's definitely happening and then we would go into negotiations for any future MOUs. And then cannabis tax changes, I worded that very vaguely because it's just cannabis as a whole. Depending on the tax rates, depending on how, how many cultivators there are and how many acres. It's just, um, it's just a gamble on what, how cannabis is going to go within the next few years. We don't have enough data right now to have a good crystal ball. But hopefully by the June budget time, we'll have a much better idea because we'll see what has come in. At least the first half, the second half, because it's in May, that's actually af, after when everybody turns in their budget. But I should be able to talk with the treasurer tax collector and have a better estimate at the last minute for the June budgets recommended. And then possible upcoming recession, you know, that's going to happen. We are usually a year or two behind, but then we also go, come out of the recession a year or two later. So that's on the horizon. And then the stock market volatility is definitely part of our interest rate, et cetera, it affects our finances. So those are potential impacts for future budgets that we need to just keep in mind that those will cause volatility in revenues, et cetera. And then also the housing market is also starting to go down. That will affect property taxes. Um, and that's 50 to 55% of our discretionary revenue is from property taxes right now and always has been. So that, that's a huge amount of our discretionary revenue. And then spending trends of the population, that's a coy way of saying our sales tax. So the sales tax is actually pretty volatile. You've seen where over multiple years, it's 500,000 to a million difference sometimes. Lately, it's been on the good side. That doesn't mean it's always going to, eventually, I'm, I'm thinking it still will increase slightly, but not at the rate it has been. And eventually it will decrease some.
Okay, questions about this segment? All right. Oh, we got a hand up, Supervisor Spatier? Can't hear you.
Hello, hello. Uh, for the possible upcoming recession, I, I think that's an ongoing potential, no matter what. I think the stock market will never be the same in the way that it's gone from hedge funds and stockbrokers to now people on Robinhood doing it on their cellphone in the middle of their day. It's just, it's become a different monster, especially with what we've seen with Reddit users being able to kind of control the market in their own way as well. So I think what we've done, uh, just this past budget by adding a million dollars into our reserves, we just need to play it safe and make sure that we're prepared. But I think that's, that's always going to be a potential of something because recessions happen from outside forces, not from what we're doing. So I think that we need to keep in mind that our reserves need to be bolstered and adequate enough to make us survive for as long as possible.
And I actually wanted to bring one more thing up that wasn't on the slides. The LATCF or the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, we did receive the first payment, which is a little over 1.5 million. And the second payment will be available sometime in 2023. So that's a little over 3 million dollars that has to be used for, and we have to claim it properly, has to be used for governmental activities. So until, um, we bring forward during mid-year budget to reserve that money until a, a spending plan is, um, decided upon for, from your board. And the possibility would be to put it in just a reserve for technology at this point. And then as we come up with something, pull it back out. But I wanted to let you know that there's a little over 3 million dollars for specifics like that.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a real quick question on the MOU increases. Uh, I had such a lovely chat with our outgoing auditor controller, Kathy Sagerlin, and it was like, the one thing she reinforced with me was like, we got to pay for those, uh, we got to pay for those. And so you mentioned that the, the wage increases were handled with non-cannabis funds this year. But do we have a clear picture yet that, that those are big chunks? Do we know how we're going to pay for those MOU increases yet? No, stay tuned for that.
Until we have very good estimates on the actuals for the year we're in right now, which we have four months, four and a half months left, those revenue sources are the ones that would be paying for it. So the slide that had the property taxes going up and the sales tax, if those are now recognized and possibly higher next year, then the answer would be yes. We would not need cannabis, it would be taken care of with, within our own means. But if those are scheduled or projected to go down, then yes, we would, no, we would need cannabis.
Yeah, what are the raw dollar figures for those increases, do you know off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't, but I can do a back of the napkin.
All right, thank you.
Is that, oh, we got another hand up, Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to speak on the 3 million dollars that Mr. Carter was talking about. That's due to the fact that we have, I think, over 60%, I think that's the number, of federal lands within our county, every county that has a certain percentage of federal land receive, has the ability to receive that if we ask for it, so I'm really happy that we asked for it. Can you give me the title of that again, though?
It's LATCF, Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. If you Google it, it'll, it'll come up correctly.
I, I, I think that I, I want to look a little further into it. I don't, I'm not against the idea of looking at, um, putting some of that in reserves. But stuff in reserves doesn't also provide us with leverage and, and this has a potential that we can leverage that. I, I need to look a little further in what tribal means within that program. Uh, and, and there's a lot of work that we need done, especially if we're looking at Vision 2028. And maybe we can leverage some of those funds with other state or federal programs, as well as maybe working with some of our tribal partners to leverage the funds they have access to so that maybe we can look at what kind of projects can be done.
Okay.
I will, I was just going to say one thing, um, these funds are pretty, the, the claiming requirement is between now and never, so it's as soon as we spend it, then we have to claim it, but it can take up to a decade or more before we use it, not saying it should. And it just has to be with government services, so it's not even as limited as ARPA.
Yeah, I believe that the only restriction was you can't use it for lobbying.
And just government services, which is.
Anything you want at that point.
Are we finished with this, um, segment six? I'll open it up for public comment, anyone in the chambers or in Zoom?
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah, come on up.
Um, getting back to the cannabis slide and the, the line item that said BOS discretionary funding, and I don't even know if, if I'm speaking to the right, in the right venue here, does that mean maybe there's a potential for a possible, um, round of grant funding again, like we've done before? And you don't have to answer, but I was just wondering if, if it's a possibility.
Um, well, the discretionary funding is the amount that we each get each year for projects within our districts. But, um, Stephen, if you want to answer the other question?
You don't have to answer, I just.
Is it can grant?
There is no, there is no current plan to do that.
Okay.
Because there is an entire policy, if it fits under that policy. So maybe some of your activities possibly could fall under that policy and then it would just be a standard request. If the board so chooses to re-implement, we can.
Great.
You have projects that you're considering?
I want another van. Anyway, thank you.
Okay.
That was before we had a policy mainly.
Okay, any other questions? I'm not seeing anybody in the Zoom room with hands up. So, um, we'll close this item and we're going to take a five-minute break.